Evening, A1, and I would like to call to order our Monday, July 18, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening, and our first order of business is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I would ask if Commissioner Jarvis would lead us into our invocation and pledge this evening.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the beauty that you have put in front of us in this county. Help us to appreciate it and take it in. We ask that you be with us tonight. Guide us, impart your wisdom, help us make good decisions for the people of Currituck County. We also ask that you go with us as we leave this place, keep us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. And our next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding two items. One would be on the consent agenda, a letter of approval in support of Chesapeake General Hospital's Heart Center, and add a closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.114. Discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of the industry or industries or businesses within the county pursuant to GS 143-318.115 to establish Orange Truck County staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract for purchase of real property, real property for property located at 2878 Carritoque Highway owned by Daniel W. Humphrey and an unaddressed property located at West Side Lane owned by Amy D. Wells and Ronald K. Bennett to be used for any governmental purpose.
All right, any other changes? If not, can I get a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion for approval. Let me have a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. All right. And this evening, we will be without one of our commissioners. Commissioner Owen Etheridge is under the weather, will not be with us this evening. I just want to let everybody know that. And the next item is our public comment portion of it. This is a time for the citizens to come before the board, and you have three minutes to speak, whatever what's on your mind, good, bad, different, anything you want to talk about. When you get started, you'll see a green light at the podium up there to let you know your time has started. You'll see a yellow light when you have about 30 seconds left. Please wrap up your thoughts, and the red light will shine when it's time for you to wrap up your thoughts as quickly as you could, please. It's like I said, it's uninterrupted, uninterrupted time. If you're here this evening to speak on one of the items on the agenda this evening, you've signed up for that. You don't need to talk about it, the public comment. So that being stated, the first person that has signed up this evening for the public comment, and when you come up here, if you could state your name and address for the record, is Renee Etheridge.
My name is Renee Etheridge, 109 Evergreen Drive in Moyoc, and I'm here to just give an update on Commissioner Owen Etheridge. And good evening, commissioners and Currituck County. Just to give an update and to let everybody know what's been going on with Owen, in March, he did have a fall, and he hit his head. He had two hematomas on his head and then had a subarachoid bleed. He started recovering from that and was doing very well. Then in May, he, we noticed we had a reaction from a medication, and we went to Norfolk Heart Hospital, which had a little bit of a reaction where he was retaining a lot of fluid. We got that under control and with some medication, and that was doing very, very well. And unfortunately, now in July, he caught COVID. He was having some blood pressure issues. He did fall two times and bruised his ribs. He did go back to the hospital, stayed for about four more days. He is home now. And did have a little bit of a slow start to his recovery, but he is recovering. He's up, getting around slowly, but he is doing well. Want to talk about Owen a little bit. Anybody that knows Owen at all knows that he is completely and totally dedicated to this county. Have to ask me, this county comes first and foremost in our lives. Every day, he's always thinking about Currituck. And we don't always agree. I don't always agree, but if you have any questions with Owen, please call him. All his information is on the county website, his phone number, his email address. We, he and I would like to address some rumors that have been out there going around that he plans to step down after he's sworn in in December. Totally, totally false. People that are out there spreading gossip about Owen just because he's having a few health issues right now, they need to get truly a new hobby. If you don't hear information coming directly from Owen and/or myself, it's not true, period. I want to paraphrase a quote that I have always liked from Eleanor Roosevelt. Small minds discuss people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge, and we appreciate you taking care of that gentleman for us to get him back up here as quick as possible. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who may have showed up late that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to speak at the public comment portion? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of this meeting, and I'm gonna get into our commissioner's report. And this evening, I'm gonna start off to my right with Commissioner McCord.
First off, prayers to Owen and Renee for having to take care of him. She's 100% correct. I mean, the man eats, sleeps, breathes, and loves Currituck County. If you know him, that's one thing, that he's truly dedicated to the county. And I hope he gets better. I've talked to him on the phone. It's kind of tough not to make my little snide remarks sometimes to him, but they're in, they're in good taste. But I hope he recovers quickly. I did talk to him Sunday for about 20 minutes on the phone, so I'm glad he's doing better. July 4th was a success at the fireworks at Whalehead, and I know they were seen all across the county, and from Idlet to Coin Jock to Bell's Island, pretty much everywhere. Everything was awesome. It was probably about 6,000 people there in attendance. It was really nice. The fireworks show kind of messed up at the end, and the grand finale went off after everybody was in the parking lots trying to leave. But exception to that, it was perfect. Nobody was injured. Like I said, it was super, super dry, but we were fortunate, like I said, the county, the fireworks, it was a great job, so commended to the staff that was there that worked it. The Whalehead Club was packed, or the whole park, the Heritage Park and everything was just, it was really, really nice. I'm the commissioner that sits on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I just wanted to touch base. The county, we did really well in the All-Star tournaments. I don't have the exacts. I know the 8U girls are going to states. I know the 10U boys did very well as, as well, and a couple of the other ones, like, I mean, we weren't, if they didn't go to states or didn't win, I mean, we had, most everybody was 500, you know, two, two wins, two losses, so they did very, very well in the baseball and softball All-Stars for the county. So kudos to them, to all the people that volunteered to coach. It's thankless. You know, they're not getting paid, they're out there coaching, and, you know, you're making somebody mad by starting one kid and another kid not playing. But like I said, hats off to those guys and gals that coach and volunteer their time, because like I said, in today's times, these kids need good adults mentoring and teaching them and stuff in the, in the, not just about the sports, but life itself. So that's pretty much it for me. Traffic's crazy out there on the weekend, so, you know, be careful, take a little more time to go, try to use back roads if you can. I was looking at the stats of the Sheriff's Department this weekend. I swear, I think everybody that came through Currituck pretty much got a ticket. The guys wrote a lot of tickets this weekend, but they, like I said, there's so many violations, it's crazy, just the amount of speed that people, you know, the speed, right before I come to the meeting tonight, we had stopped a guy for doing 80-plus miles an hour passing people in the turner lane. And I guess he thought that was a good idea on, on the main highway, so. But like I said, people need to have a little more respect for the other parties, you know, out there in the world. I think that's kind of went to the wayside a little bit lately. But like I said, just be careful, and it's gonna be a hot week this week, so if you're outside working or work outside, stay hydrated.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McCord, and Vice Chairman Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'd like to do a big shout-out for specifically Fire EMS in the county. I had a very close call with one of my children that she came very close to going home. It's probably as close to death scenario as you could get, and she could actually survive. Unfortunately for her, this event occurred in other counties than Currituck County. And in discussions with some of our staff, basically came out, we in Currituck live in a bubble when it comes to Fire EMS. And by that, I mean, every ambulance that drives up and down our roads is, is equipped as an advanced life support vehicle. That is rare in this area. We went even as far as, two of our fire engines in Corolla are advanced life support equipped, meaning the only thing they can't do that an ambulance can do is transport. They can do every other medical procedure an ambulance can do on the scene and await for a different vehicle to do the transportation. The, my daughter's event occurred in a county that didn't have advanced life support, and as a result of that, it, it, in the description of what went on reminds me of some of the things I've seen in third-world countries. And not throwing disparaging comments at other counties that are doing the best that they can do, we have, in my opinion, appropriately placed an emphasis on the public safety of the folks that live in our county, come and recreate in our county, and come and vacation in our county. It doesn't come by accident. We have some outstanding individuals that had the foresight to equip us and train us in the manner that they have. And, you know, one of the statistics is probably the most significant is when we look at, for example, we did a pay and salary study that, that addressed some of the pay disparity we had with our Fire EMTs. Since that pay study was enacted, we have not lost a single Fire medic, EMT, due to a lateral transfer to another community. Some were promoted, some retired, but we didn't lose anybody to another county or another municipality. Bob and I one evening had the opportunity to sit and survey basically the Whalehead Fire Department. It was nonstop, lights, sirens, ambulances, helicopters, and I think I was only there for about two, three hours. The job that these persons do, our personnel do, is something that we can be absolutely proud of. We are by far one of the best-equipped, best-trained, with up-to-date treatment protocols. Some of the stories I hear, just, I'm floored about the, the people that we have working for our county. And I'm proud that we have that kind of capability, because it's not common in other areas in our region. So that's my PSA for the evening.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chairman Beaumont. I'd like to just address a couple of things. First of all, part of what we adjusted the, the agenda tonight for was to include a letter of support. The Virginia State Commissioner for Virginia Department of Health asked our board if we would support an open-heart surgery program at the Chesapeake Regional Center, and this board has, you know, we've got the letter here to sign and support that. That would give our residents someplace closer to, to go to, right? Because right now, any heart issues like that, they would have to go to Norfolk, or I believe the Greensville would be the next closest location. So this is just giving some support, saying, yes, we would support you bringing this open-heart facility into the Chesapeake regional area. It's just, it's something for, something that we felt would be good for our citizens here. So this will be signed, and this will be sent back to them, and like I said, it was added to our consent agenda for this evening. And secondly, I do sit as the executive, on the executive board for the Albert Regional Health Services for our area, which consists of numerous counties. And the current director, about a month and a half ago, informed us that he was retiring early from Albert Regional Health, Mr. Battle Betts. And we have been in the process of finding a replacement health director, and his last day is gonna be July, I believe it's the 29th. So it's, he came on calling us really quickly, so we will be doing interviews the end of this month for replacement, so that we'll be director hopefully in place relatively soon for the Albert Regional Health position there. And just to reiterate, yes, traffic's bad out there. Lower Currituck Fire Department is almost right behind my house. I get the pages, I, you know, help where I can, but nightingale flies over my house. We get that all evening, nights, daytime. I'm writing that fly pattern, and you hear the sirens constantly going off, so it's active out there. So be careful, be on the lookout for apparatus and people on the roads, the Sheriff's Department, everyone out there, just be cautious, be careful, and volunteer and help any way you can. And that's all I have for this evening. Commissioner White.
Thank you, sir. I think I'll second, I believe, when you said in the email when I sent out about the Heart Center, it would be nice if it was here in Currituck. We don't, we don't have that, but it is nice. Hopefully, they can get this done and get it much closer to home for us should we need those services. And I don't have much tonight, so I'm just gonna tag onto what Paul said. We were sitting on my deck one night, just hang out, solving Currituck's problems in the worlds, and watching the number of helicopters go in and out and sirens, and the number of volunteers that are involved to make that happen as well. They, they put the trucks up, another one come back in, they get called back out from the house again, and go stand out there in the pavement to direct traffic while the helicopter comes in and out. And one evening, I think the helicopter was there for 45 minutes. They kept throttling up and down, up and down, up and down, trying to get someone stabilized to get them out of there. And the whole time, the volunteers are standing out in the heat on the pavement directing traffic. So just want to say thank you to those people that do that. It is, it's, it's, it's a rare breed that does that, and, and they should be commended. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White and Commissioner Etheridge.
Nothing to not share with.
Wow. And then Commissioner Jarvis.
Thank you. Like many of my commissioners, we, we have received lots of calls about traffic. I know in the southern end of the county, the traffic is always bad this time of year, but it's become unmanageable at the intersection of Edgewater Road and Highway 158. Numerous accidents, near misses every hour of the day, constant calls from many of my neighbors. We all received an email today from another neighbor of mine. It is a daily danger to leave our houses and get out on the highway from Edgewater Road. North Carolina Department of Transportation was here on May 16th, and once they realized the difference between Edgewater Drive and Edgewater Road, they gave us promises and guarantees that they would be back in touch with us. So far, we have heard nothing. So I'm encouraging all of my neighbors in Lower Currituck to go to their website, ncdot.gov, and go to the section that says, "Report a Problem" under "Other Issues," and leave them a message as to how dangerous your daily travel out on that highway is. We have to fight to get some recognition down in Lower Currituck in many cases, but we have to be able to live our lives in a safe fashion. Our friends, our neighbors, our children are out on that road, and we need that road to be made safer. So I encourage you, like my fellow commissioners did, to be careful when you're out there, be patient, and be kind as you go up and down the highways. Also want to give a shout-out to our staff, from the EMTs and the sheriff's deputies and all the people that make this county work. I am so appreciative of the group that makes the county work. I want to give two special shout-outs from calls that I've got. A lot of times, we get calls and emails complaining about staff, but this week, I have gotten two very nice phone calls about two different groups. So shout-out to Bill Nunes and his group for going over and beyond what is expected of inspectors, fighting the traffic themselves, getting things done. You're appreciated. And then to Jason Weeks for all that you do keeping all of our facilities. You and your staff do an outstanding job, and Sound Park has never looked better, so I appreciate it. And finally, continued prayers for Owen and hope that he's able to recover quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. And next, and hopefully, the dual role of this will be ending tonight. So we have our county manager slash county attorney report.
I just want to bring the board's attention to two meetings that will be held this week on the staff level. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll be meeting with the design build team for the Tolls Creek Elementary School, so we'll continue with being that project up and moving along. And then on Thursday, the Assistant County Manager and I will be meeting with Estorin Sanctuary representatives to reengage in the conversation about a possible land swap on the North Beach, some of the county land that we received from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, or some of the state Estorin Sanctuary, with the idea and goal of being able to move the North Beach ramp north to provide for a future day-use area and also a safe beach on which people can recreate without having to be concerned about motor vehicles. Those are all the goals of, of that project. So that, that conversation will start again this Thursday, and we'll inform the board of the status of both of those issues following the meetings. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Could you give us an update on the Corolla ABC store?
That was my question. Thank you. The Corolla ABC store has been...
Foundation support.
Yeah, we have a slab. It has been some, some modification to the design has been completed, and I believe we're about ready to, where is Rebecca, about ready to go to bid?
I've not received the final drawing yet, so. Just me updating the package.
Making updates to the bid package so we can put it back out for bids again, so.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yep, go ahead.
I know the other, as Commissioner Beaumont said also too, and I know Ms. Etheridge is sitting there, I wanted to just say thank you to the first responders, the people that take that first call. They do, I know compared to other agencies, and I'm not knocking other agencies, I probably shouldn't say that, but we have the best. I mean, they are just spot-on, make sure everybody's safe, and they are very knowledgeable, so kudos to them.
Okay, thank you, county manager. Okay, our next item is going to be public hearing, and our first one is a legislative matter, PB 22-06, H2OBX LLC, request for conditional rezoning from general business and conditional general business to conditional general business to allow a campground with up to 335 campsites with associated amenities at 8526 Carritoque Highway, behind the OBX Water Park, tax map 124, lot 137L, Papa Branch Township. And with that, I believe I'll turn it over to Director Kevin.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, commissioners. This is your first item. As you heard, it is a conditional rezoning in February. You approved a new ordinance that allows campgrounds. Now you have your first application for a campground. So here we go. The site is in southern Currituck. It's one you're probably familiar with. It's the H2OBX Water Park. Here is a closer image of it. Where the campground will go is just north of that paved area. The site is zoned currently conditional general business. This is a conditional zoning you approved on May 2nd, 2016, and that was for the water park and all the associated features. What this rezoning will do, well, it will turn the entire parcel over to conditional rezoning and allow for the campground use in addition to what was approved with water park. The site is in the full-service district, and this use is compatible in the full service. Here is the site plan for the proposed campsite. It includes 244 RV sites, 25 tent sites, and 66 cabin sites, for a total of 335 sites. If you see on the screen, your cabins are in this area, and your tent sites are spread out over here in the northern part of the site. You will enter the site through a driveway along the southern property line, and then proceed through the parking lot into that rear drive aisle. That's how you get to the campground. There is a centrally-located lodge, pavilion, and amenity area. It is right here, which I'll talk about more in a, in a moment. And then the entire site will be buffered with a 50-foot Type D buffer. One other thing I did want to mention is there is a secondary entrance right here. This entrance will be for maintenance only, it's not for the public use.
Kevin, can you stop real quick, go back there?
Sir.
So the entrance will be at the southern end of the park right there.
Yep.
How far back do they go before they turn into? They're gonna go all the...
All the way to the back, and then they'll come down that back drive aisle.
By the parking lot area?
Yes.
So they won't be going in front of the houses and all that back there?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
They will come all the way along the southern property, property line.
Okay, because there's some residence and all the businesses back there, I think, correct?
Yes, there's a business that's, that's close, but...
What's the name, what's the name of that road?
I believe it is Waste Management Business.
Okay, it's not getting anywhere near Lucinda, then?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. So here we have a close-up and a rendering of the amenities. This is that central area. Amenities include a swimming pool, playground, pickleball courts, cornhole courts, shuffleboard courts, and volleyball, a lodge, pavilion, golf cart rentals, and a dog park. This is a detail of the entryway. They will enter off the existing access point from 158, as shown in this drawing. There's a new access road up the southern part of the property line. Currently, the water park is accessed via an easement on the adjacent property. Because of the way the ordinance is written and everything having to be on one property, this proposal is for a second driveway access up their southern property line. They are working with the adjacent property owner to secure an easement over this part of their property, so that the adjacent property owner does have full access to the existing drive, driveline, so no access to either property is being cut off. There is an existing wastewater treatment plant on-site that will accommodate the campground. The number of sites will be contingent on the capacity. Just to ensure that there is adequate capacity, the applicant will develop the campground in two phases. Phase one will be accommodated totally with what's available at the plant if further expansion is needed for phase two. All requirements from DEQ will have to be obtained. The land use plan, it is consistent with the land use plan in the following, or in the five policies listed. I'll go through them real quickly. ED1, it promotes a new and expanding industry. ML4, it's a limited 158 access with landscaping appearance that will have a positive long-term impact. ES1, there are suitable soils and inf... ES1, there are suitable soils and infrastructure. ES2, wetland areas on the site remain undeveloped and protected. And finally, PP2, there are adequate public facilities to accommodate this use. See, statement of consistency. The technical review committee did review this application. They recommended approval with three conditions, the first being that all development shall be consistent with the GB district, a second that a private access sign shall be posted on Ballast Rock Road, and that road shall not be a public entrance. That is the one on the, you know, kind of northern part of the site that I pointed out earlier. And finally, the third recommended condition was that it be developed in phases, and phase one is not to exceed 60,000 gallons per day with their wastewater treatment. The planning board reviewed the application on June 14th, found it consistent with the policies that I just read, and voted to approve the application with a 5 to 0 vote. And I will leave you with the 11 considerations, the review standards for conditional zoning, and then make myself available for any questions.
Total acres is the campground size.
Ah, acreage. The total parcel size is 96.77 acres. And I'm not sure of the campground. I know that...
59.7.
59.7, thank you, Commissioner. And the density works out to 3.46 campsites per acre, which is well below the 12 per acre that the ordinance permits.
Any other questions from the board for Director?
Just, you mentioned TRC. Did NC DOT have any qualms about the added traffic at that intersection where the road comes out to the highway?
No, ma'am. NC DOT reviewed the application and did not comment on that.
Okay.
Are they going to have to... Mr. Kemp, are they going to have to fill in part of a pond to change the road in?
Yes, sir. They would have to reorient that stormwater pond at the front. You know, the applicant might be able to speak to this a little further, but we have had discussions where they may bring forward a text amendment following this to look at being able to use that existing driveway. I don't know how exactly the ordinance would work out to allow it, but, you know, because it's on an adjacent parcel. But that's something they may explore in the future, just to avoid having to have two parallel roads.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board at this time? If not, I'll go ahead and ask the applicant if they'd like to come forward at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And address any of the concerns you may have heard.
Thank you, Pen Ellis, H2OBX. Thank you for hearing this tonight. I don't have a lot to say. We've put a lot of work into this project and worked with the county and the planning team to follow along the text amendment that was set by by the county, and I just wanted to say that we're, you know, obviously, we're very keen on Lower Currituck. We invested down there, and we have a nice recreational property. We do think this will be a good complement for the area and the park itself. They do work well together, but it also does it without... I've heard all the traffic comments. There's not a lot, doesn't add a lot of traffic for a business down there from what we have already there, so... Kevin did mention, you know, as we look at that road, it wasn't really contemplated, the two roads, that there may be a way to kind of put that together so it don't have two roads side by side, but either way, it could work. We'd work with our neighbors and see if there's a solution for that, so we'll pursue that before we... I know this is just a conditional rezoning. The next step would be the major site plan approval, where we'd have all the specifics on the site plan. We tried to provide, we probably provided a lot more information than we needed to for this phase, but we thought it was helpful for everybody to get a good understanding of what we're trying to do down on our land next to the site. I don't know if you have any questions for...
Has the easement been secured for the entrance?
Yes. It's been signed. I've signed it, and the Griggs have it to sign, and...
So it's not official yet, is what you're saying?
It's not recorded yet. Is it a recorded easement eventually?
Not recorded yet.
It's not recorded yet, but they have my signature on it, and they have it. Shay will sign it, and our lender still has to sign it, but we met the wordings there. I handed it off to him today.
I have a question. So in staff's presentation, he mentioned that the proposed amenities include, and he went through a list, and he said that these amenities are detailed in the attached applicant's submittal package. Are those amenities, in fact, part of your submittal package? And do we know where? Because I couldn't find them, but I may have missed it.
Again, I understand the master site plan approval is where we would fine-tune all those amenities, and so we've located in general on the site where all this will go.
And I follow that, and I understand that, but that's not what we presented. We presented that they're part of your package, what you're proposing for amenities. We've had instances where the proposal sounds great, and then somehow it all disappears.
It won't be less than what you see here. I mean, we're looking to do a first-class facility and welcome center, and if that's the concern.
So depending on which way this goes this evening, excuse me, then the next package you're going to bring before us will have all those detailed exactly in it for approval.
The major site plan approval.
Okay.
Process. Correct.
I do have qualms about the two roads. I think I've made myself pretty clear on that. I think that's a terrible idea. I think it's already confusing, once you get there to the park, to the water park, and I think that two roads is a terrible idea. And I'm not sure exactly what would be needed to be done to remedy that, but I think two roads side by side with traffic coming in and out to the water park, in and out to RV park, in and out to the sand mine and other uses on the existing road is a recipe for danger.
We all agree, ourselves and the neighbors, and I think it's more after we get past this, we're going to work with staff to see what would be the right. Is it a text amendment or something else? Because that road is specifically built just to service the water park and the land behind it, right? So it's kind of built for that purpose. So I think it's whatever we get through this step, and before we get to the major site plan, we'll work on whatever would be done to, I think, to try to solve what you're saying.
And I hope it will be before that next step.
Yeah, it would be before we went further from there.
Okay. Any other questions right now from the board?
I just, I think, in the language, Mr. Kemp, we... The way it was written, we had, they had to directly abut a major arterial, basically, a highway.
That's correct.
So an easement precludes, is not a direct, because they're crossing someone else's property, right? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
That is why the applicant moved their entryway and their entry drive totally and solely on their property.
Right.
The first 200 or 300 feet of what you're looking at is on our property, directly on 158. The intention was that road was supposed to go straight out. There were some challenges with some owners on Homeowner in Lucinda when the water park was built, so last minute, we said, "What, with DOT?" They said, "Well, just move the distance," so we did. That came over on the H2OBX land where the other property was on the Griggs' land, and so now what we've done is, we all have full unrestricted access easement. They have it to our piece. We have it to their piece.
Okay.
Except the text amendment didn't call, didn't think about a dedicated road that was built. So we just, what we did is we showed that if we have to, we could, we can keep it all on our land and do it, but as Mrs. Jarvis has seen, and she went out with Shay and I, and we looked at it a month or so, a month and a half ago, and we said, "Let's get to this point, and then before we go to the major site plan approval, we'll work with the county and the staff to figure out if, what the best path would be to use that dedicated road."
The critical aspect of the ordinance as currently written is that all, I guess, lack of a better word, all aspects of the campground must be on property owned by the...
Single entity.
Single entity. So that was a complicating factor, because, of course, an easement is on someone else's property. It was going to be utilized as part of the campground for access, thus causing the need to provide for this new access road, as shown on this illustration.
And that, you know, when I looked at it, I didn't think, I said, "Well, yeah, all the campgrounds on 59, everything to do with the campgrounds on 59 acres, all on that land," thinking that it needed unrestricted easement. So it seems like it should be, since the road is specifically built just for those two properties, and doesn't impact other people, there should be a solution. But again, we'll, if we have a positive way to move forward, if it moves forward from tonight, then we'll focus on that before we go to the major site plan.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? If not, I'm going to thank you, and I'm going to open up the, I'll open up the public hearing portion for PB 22-06 OBX, H2OBX LLC. And the first person we have signed up, again, if you could state your name and address for the record, is Diane Seaver.
Hi, I'm Diane Seaver. I live on Lucinda Lane, next to the water park. When we bought the property, there was no aspect of a water park. It was news to us, and it's been a hassle. And I agree with the lady...
Real quick, could you just state your address for the record real quick?
154 Lucinda Lane, Powell's Point.
Okay.
With the lady about the traffic and stuff, and it is a hassle when the cars are coming and going into the water park. And if a campground is there, it's only going to be worse. From what I understand, that somebody had looked at it and said that there was no need for a traffic light there, but they did it through the week. They ought to do it on weekend when the traffic is really crazy, because we can sit there for 15, 20 minutes and can't even get out on the road, or if we're coming north, you can't turn in. And it is a hassle, and I'm not in favor of it, and I'll just say it out front. Thank you.
Thank you. The next we have is Jerry Seaver. Again, just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jerry Seaver. I live at 154 Lucinda Lane, and that was my wife, Diane. And this is a great-looking project here, but I want all of you to listen very careful, because it will happen. Just as long as they don't come down Lucinda Lane with campers or whatever, but I'm telling you, if they don't do something with a light, somebody's going to die there. It's a death trap, because if we're heading south, I can't even turn a signal on to turn into my driveway, because somebody thinks I'm coming into the water park, and they pull out. I can't turn my signal light on until I'm in front of the driveway, and you know what I'm saying? If somebody's behind me, they're going to think, "Well, this idiot ain't even got his signal on." But I'm just saying, I'm telling you, there needs to be a light there for the traffic, and like my wife said, if there's a campground there, it's only going to be worse. Anybody of common sense knows, with a camper behind the pickup, is going to have to even get out faster. And I know, Mike, you've been to my house, and Lucinda Lane and the water park is real close together. And my concern, why I'm here this evening, I know on different occasions, they was talking about coming down Lucinda Lane for a sand mine one time and cut in behind the water park. And that's why I was here this evening. I wanted to make sure that the entrance to the campground ain't coming down Lucinda Lane.
And that's one of the questions I asked. It looks like they're not going to be...
And that's my, whoops, I'm sorry, that's my main concern. But the second is, I'm telling you, and all of you listen, if they ain't a light there and campers is coming out of there, somebody's going to get killed, I'm telling you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
And I would recommend, once again, that is something out of our control. We don't do traffic signals. NC DOT, go to their website, report it. If you have to do it weekly, go weekly and report it.
Okay.
It'll get their attention.
Okay. Well, I just thought maybe by saying that, whoever's taking care of this project, you know what I'm saying? I don't know. I just know it needs to be, the issue needs to be took care of.
And I think, I mean, that's a valid point throughout the county a lot, too, because even Sunday mornings, when I'm trying to get out of my house to make a left turn, I'm waiting a half an hour for the traffic light in Grandy to shut down so I can get a clear path to cut across the road, so...
Well...
It's terrible out there, I know.
I took chances coming out of my pickup, but if you're pulling something, that's double trouble.
County manager, I've noticed there's a lot of strips on the road here. Are they doing a study or a count of the cars now on the highway? Because I've seen a lot of those strips on the road, on the south end of the county. There's, I've seen like five different strips down there.
They're throughout these northern Dare County as well, and some of the towns.
So they're starting to do a study of the count, the amount of traffic?
Apparently.
Okay, so maybe that'll, maybe that'll open their eyes a little bit and see the volume we're having.
I commend the officers for the job that they got to do for the traffic that's on weekends, and those speeders and everything.
180 of them got tickets this weekend, and I can tell you that much.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you. Next I have is Gary Dunston. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm Gary Dunston. I don't live in Currituck County right now, but I did raise my children here, and I live in Kitty Hawk, but I also own 101, 02, and 105 Heinz Commercial Park Drive, and that, the campground surrounds my property. But what I can say is, what a great thing for Currituck County. This doesn't add any services hardly, and no impact to the schools, and creates a huge tax base for Currituck County. I can't think of anything better for this property. So I'm in full support of it, but I do, I do have some questions about it. Maybe I don't know the rules, but when you go through a conditional rezoning, I would think that you would have to submit, if it's a conditional rezoning, a true conditional rezoning, you would need to submit it as it's supposed to be, not to bring it in at the end. So I'm real concerned about a couple of things. One, Selena mentioned about the double entrance. How do you do a double entrance side by side without confusing everybody? Do you turn in the first one? Do you turn in the second one? If you add a second one that's further up the road, do you add to the de-sail lane? You know, that's just a little bit confusing there, and it would be confusing to anybody that had never been there. Secondly, there's really no signage that's along the road that tells you to turn in the water park 500 feet, like you would see at Busch Gardens or any other theme park. They tell you when to turn off the highway, where it is 500 feet ahead. We don't have any of that on either side of the road. That would, that would help. But the biggest thing that concerns me, I think, is the plan that was submitted. They're asking for access on the southern end. Well, you, they want you to go through a parking lot where people are pulling in and out, backing in and out, and then there's, they're proposing a 90-degree hairpin turn there at the end of that driveway that goes into the, to the park. And if you've got a big RV that's many times as big as buses, and there are a lot of times pulling Jeeps or trucks behind them, they can't make that hairpin turn, and neither can fire vehicles. So what I would suggest is, I don't, again, I don't know whether this can be done later... I don't know whether this can be done later, site plan submittal, or if it needs to be done at the conditional rezoning. But what I see a problem is, is the entrance and how they've addressed it, because that last parking aisle needs to be admitted and moved somewhere else. So, they can make less than a 90-degree turn there, and you won't be going through a Walmart-type parking lot entering into a campground. So, at the end of Ballast Rock, you've got a big turn there with roads going three different directions. Right now, it services the treatment plant. Well, they're saying they want to keep servicing the treatment plant, but they have this site plan submitted showing that that's the main entrance to the whole thing. And if you, if you, if you get people that are getting, or become familiar with the site, and they see that hairpin turn, they've got a big RV, they're pulling in there, and once they become familiar with the site, I can promise you that Ballast Rock's going to be the main entrance, regardless of what the sign says, private use. So, my thought is, is why can't they come in from the south, make, get rid of the 90-degree turn, cut out the last parking aisle, move that somewhere else, make that the main entrance all the way to the park with a 24-foot drive aisle, slight turn rather than 90 degrees, and then let it circle around the park for fire protection, and not even enter on Ballast Rock, and just have the Ballast Rock part enter into the existing sewage treatment plant, which is what they've said they wanted to do anyway. So, maybe all this could be addressed at the site plan submittal. And if so, I'm all for it. But I, I do think that maybe a text amendment to allow an easement for part of the access would solve that problem for the dual accesses.
And the second part of this, they would have to provide, is exactly what you stated, you know, the, the access, how it's going to be laid out, where they manage, so they'd have to present that, the, I guess, the final, or the drawing to the, to the staff first to go through it, so.
Well, my thought is, is suppose this comes up later when this board's gone, and they come up and say, well, you approved this at the conditional rezoning, why is it not going to be approved now, come the way we submitted it then that you approved? That was the only question I would have on that. But, but please know that I'm in 100% support of this project. It's going to do nothing to anybody's property values, except make them go up. It might be a little inconvenience, but change is inevitable for everybody. And, you know, privacy things on your backyard will prevent a lot of stuff. The traffic thing, they've got a D cell lane. My only complaint about the real traffic problem is there's no signage along the highway, telling you to turn for the water park 500 yards ahead or that kind of thing. There needs to be some of that. But please know that I'm in support of it, and my property's affected most of it because it's right in the middle of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Kevin, I mean, I believe signage, that would have to be provided by DOT. Yeah, the county, I mean, yeah, that's DOT property, so they'd have to approve any signage, I believe, on that. Next we have is Ken Ellis. Yes, you signed up for the public hearing.
I thought it was signage. I'm for it.
Okay. Well, if you want to, if you want to come, I need your name and address, because you're signed up on here.
I address somebody.
Well, come on up to the, come on up to the, state your name and address.
I'm assigned to be here, I'm sorry.
Name and address again, and we're good to go.
Ken Ellis, H2O OBX Water Park. Again, we, we've provided much more here, because this is, it was a new text amendment for the county, and they had a lot of guidelines. We wanted to make sure we could fit within what we have. The major site plan, which would come next, is we would, you know, yes, we are going to, that parking lot won't be there. That will be a stacking lane for the RV in the right turning radius, and all those things that you were talking about would come in the major site plan approval, which is the next major approval that we have to have to move forward. As far as Ballast Rock Road, it's a condition that it is, it's maintenance-only. We've talked about having gated, right? So, it is not, you know, intentional to go out there, because we, we want to control who's going in and out of the RV park. So, whether, we've talked about signage, but we've talked about maintenance in that way as well. So, the, but yes, the detail, the site plan will all come in the next phase. So, thank you.
Okay. I had no one else signed up for the public hearing, and somebody else here showed up late, didn't get a chance to sign up, the one speaking in public hearing. Yes, sir, if you could just come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Shay Balance, 345 Jarvisburg Road, Jarvisburg. I just wanted to add to what Mr. Ellis said and Mr. Dunston. We, I represent the adjacent landowner that owns the other part, portion of the main entrance, and we don't agree with the two entrances either. We understand why they had to put it on their site plan tonight to meet the current regulations, but we think it is going to add confusion and not work correctly. We want to be supportive and cooperative in whatever way we can to see that they can use the entrances there. We, we did come up with an agreement. Mr. Ellis has signed it. We still have to get that finished up and recorded. And as long as that, that happens, we're, we're, we're happy. And, and understanding that, you know, we're supportive of a text amendment or a variance, whatever is needed here to make, make it okay for him to use the entrances there and not have to fill in ponds and construct a second confusing entrance. Given that later down the road, when we intend to do something with their property, the entrance is still going to be able to be used for our property and its development as well, as it was originally built, as he mentioned. So, I just wanted to add that to eliminate any...
Can I ask a question, Shay? About how many trucks do you have that come down that road a day?
We, we don't have any traffic right now currently using that road. The mine that we had has been completed. It is, it is, still has a permit, but the permit's met its boundaries, and it hasn't been used or mined in in, I'm going to say, maybe two or three years now. So, at the moment, we don't have any traffic that uses that. I will say that there has been a traffic study done. I think if, in that study, if I remember correctly, in the future, if there is a need for a light, DOT said they would revisit that. Being they have a merge over lane, it's a very professional entrance. It was planned ahead of time for a large amount of traffic, and it seems to be handling that well. I don't know of very many, if any at all, accidents that have happened in front of that entrance in comparison to where Gitgo is at, is a daily nightmare. I believe, to add to that, the, there's numerous driveways there, that none of them line up, Dollar General, that sort of thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for me?
No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who didn't get a chance to speak, that didn't sign up and would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of this. And I'll ask the board if they have any other questions for staff, or...
I have a couple...
Okay, yes, sir.
...concerns.
Okay.
So, the first one, I'm, and the, and the basic struggle is, we have a text that says one thing. We're immediately looking at, I get it, in order to be compliant with the EEO, we have double entrances. So, we have that on one hand, and on the other hand, so we're either looking at double entrances, which, how do you put a traffic light on two side-by-side entrances?
Let me speak from experience. At Edgewater Road, you can't.
Okay, so, so there's that. We talk about the D cell lane, and I get that, but that's, we haven't had accidents there, I mean, and you're right, it hasn't, I mean, DOT's study was kind of spot-on. But to address the concerns rated or brought up earlier, that's cars in D cell lanes. You know, you put one or two rigs in that D cell lane, now the traffic's all backed up down 158. Yeah, you got somebody with... I cannot even imagine trying to pull out, again, addressing the concern, I cannot even imagine pulling out, trying to go north out of the campground. You know, you're stuck going right. And then to address the comment about a variance, if the first campground that comes before that is, is speaking to our brand-new campground text amendment, and we're already looking at a variance on it, that means we didn't do a real good job on the text amendment itself. And then, you know, kind of, and then to reiterate, without a traffic light, I, I'm really concerned. I, I don't see anything, you know, I hope we don't have to wait for a series of fatalities to get DOT to get moving. And, and that's, that's my concern, because DOT's out of money, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, that's, and I don't pull a big rig, but I've pulled a trailer before.
And, and that's the concern, I guess, with the traffic light down by Edgewater. They had the Dollar General go in, they've got the, just the distillery going in, Carrier Corporation just moved in, and you would think...
The golf course.
The golf course. You would think with all that stuff going on, DOT would be chomping at the bit to put a traffic light there, because that's going to be worse, it is worse, than the, in front of the water park right now. And, and as you stated, this is concerns. If those concerns aren't addressed in the second portion of this, then the board's probably not going to approve that.
The main, I don't know how you could put, I mean, and I can attest statistics from the wrecks at Edgewater compared to here at the water park. I think we've had one rear-end collision of somebody pulling in to Mr. Ellis's, and it was a minor fender bender. I looked it up. But the, I don't know how you could put a light in with a double entrance.
Wait, it's not a double entrance. It's further in.
It's a double road. It's not a double entrance. It's a double road.
Single entrance, but the road's going to split.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just the...
The entrance we're using now, this will always be the entrance with Griggs land and Arlen, right? It splits once you get inside.
Okay, all right. I thought it was...
It's the same entrance as if we were lucky to get DOT to put a light in.
Yeah, that's what she was right there. It's just the one entrance.
It's always this.
Thank you for clarifying. I was, I thought it was closer to the road. Thank you. Kevin, have we seen traffic studies that look at, you know, I mean, campers as traffic? Or I, I don't, I don't remember if DOT does traffic analysis based on the type of vehicle coming in and out. I mean, we've seen commercial rates of traffic. I've seen that, but I don't, I don't recall ever seeing where...
I, I'm only aware of...
Daily trips.
Daily trips, looking at, you know, a vehicle as a vehicle.
Because, because I'll tell you, it's a gorgeous-looking, I, I, I mean, the facility looks great. We just can't afford to kill anyone.
What we have right now going on down at Edgewater is you've got the, the semis, or what do you call it, the big rigs, whatever, turning in for the hardy storage. And you have Carrier Corporation with their big trucks unloading equipment. So, that whole one, once you turn right, that one little road going in there backs up with big rigs and vehicles. So, that's a congestion right there. But that's a different, I mean, but you've got a lot of big semis trying to turn down that road, and that is a congested area.
Well, we've had a traffic analysis done before with, with FOST and Flora. So, one way to alleviate this is to have a traffic study conducted, make it part of the condition. Then a traffic study has to be conducted on this property to understand the ebbs and flows of it. I mean, the split driveway thing, I don't think is that big a deal, because they're going to direct traffic internally to go right, to go to the water park slash RV park. If, if it doesn't get worked out, the left lane, the existing roadway will probably have a yield sign or stop sign to merge in to get out or something, but the traffic's going to be minimal on the old driveway, if, if that, for now.
For now. But, you know, I see that property, as Mr. Dunston said, it's only going to increase the value of the property around it.
And it'll get changed again.
And, I mean, I have concerns about looking down the road at that. And, and I realize this is a conditional rezoning, but I, I think we need to voice our concerns for the next step. If this conditional zoning is approved tonight, I, I really believe that the next step is not going to be as palatable for Mr. Ellis if, if we don't get some of these concerns addressed, because it's, it's dangerous to live in Lower Currituck, and this is not going to make it any less dangerous. I think it's beautiful. I think it's laid out nicely. But I think we have to...
This is the applicant question.
Make it for where the people who live there have a quality of life as well.
Two things. One, the way it's set up with the entrance, there's a lot of stacking on that road. And I agree with you, as the, the rigs find a use or development, and more goes on there, and there's more happening back there, for sure. But right now, the way it's set up actually works very well. You turn off, you have the whole length of road, we're going to turn that back parking lot in, in the major site plan, split so they can stack and store off the road. But...
Well, that's what we're counting on.
Yes, for sure. But, yeah, I, I will, I will be a proponent of working with DOT for a, for a, a traffic light there, especially, and you would be as well, with the, with the further development that happens down in that property, for sure. So...
Ballpark, Mr. Ellis, if I could ask you, ballpark, how, when they turn in, and I've been to the water park, when they turn in off of 158, how far in where the road kind of splits? A football field?
Yeah, it's about 350 feet. Yeah, 100 yards or so.
Okay.
And then we, we bring them down, and then we direct them, they start coming into the parking spaces. So, there's, there's probably another couple thousand feet before they would even start pulling in, you know. And, you know, and we have access in our parking lot. We've not used the full parking lot, but we...
It's gone closed.
Yeah. But, yeah, so we're a proponent for all that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. It's not about traffic. Looking through the report that we got, it said at the community meeting that some of the neighbors were worried about noise, different things going on at a campsite, and the county was looking at having license for campgrounds. Has that been dropped, or is that something we're still working on?
No, that needs to come forward to you, and I expect will be in the next 30 to 60 days.
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff or applicant from the board? Okay, with none, then I'll ask the board for some action on this item here, in form of a motion.
I'll move to approve PB 22-6 H2O OBX LLC, because the request is consistent with the land use plan policies ED1, ML4, ES1, ES2, PP2. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it addresses a need to operate a desired business for tourists and perhaps an economic stimulus to local businesses that many share, the customer base and residents who may work at the facility. And I will add the conditions. One, that all proposed development will be consistent with and currently allowed within the GB zoning. Two, the entire entrance to the campground shall be on the same parcel as the campground under the same ownership as the campground. Three, private access not for campground use signage shall be placed where Ballast Rock Road terminates at the subject property line. The guard shack amenity and other campground entrance exit features will be eliminated at this location. Four, since the total wastewater capacity for the development is expected to exceed 60,000 GPD, and wastewater capacities beyond 60,000 GPD is not available to the project, to the project at this time, per the project engineer, the project will be developed in two phases. A, phase one shall include no more campsites and amenities that will bring the total wastewater usage up to 60 gallons per day for the development. B, phase two, remaining campsites and amenities shall not be developed into the proper state permits or issued and required system expansion is complete and operating in compliance with state permits. And five, the project engineer shall designate the number of campsites and which amenities phase one will include prior to the site plan approval. And I will add six, that a traffic study be conducted by the applicant to, in, in advance of the prior, the site approval process.
Before we move forward, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question for the attorney. As a condition, she put that the property needs to be owned in advance, that, and we're talking about, if we work through something on the easement and possibly... talking about, if we work through something on the easement and possibly make a language change, how would that affect this, as it's a condition now that it must be owned, and maybe it's not owned, but it's, we grant an easement change, would they have to go through the whole process again?
Maybe you ought to make the condition, or add to that condition unless otherwise modified by law.
Okay. I'll reread, too, that the entire entrance to the campground site shall be on the same parcel as the campground and under the same ownership as the campground unless there's a change...
Otherwise modified by law.
Otherwise modified by law.
And, and because you've added a condition, I don't, I don't recall whether the applicant has agreed to it, but you'll want to make sure the applicant on the record agrees to the additional condition of a traffic impact analysis.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, and I'll ask the applicant if he agrees to those conditions that were stated.
I do.
You do, okay, okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Does the board need to take a five-minute break?
That would be great.
Okay, yeah, five-minute break before we get into the next item. All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our meeting. The next item is under public hearing, quasi judicial hearing, is PB 22-10 Beach Buggy LLC, use permit request for auto sales and rental use to sell low-speed electric vehicles located at 5760 Kerituck Highway, tax map 84, parcel 30E Papa Branch Township. Use permit, public hearing for the low-speed electric vehicle sales, Kerituck Highway, Papa Branch, two. Okay. All right, we have the county attorney, or...
Good afternoon, sir.
Oh, yes, come on, sir.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Attorney Timothy Kohler, and I represent NC Beach Buggy LLC. We do have a application for UDO for, under PB 22-10. We would ask to continue that matter until the August 15th session.
Okay. All right, I guess we have to make a motion and...
I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, all right, we have, I guess I'll make a motion to move PB 22-10 to our August 15th meeting. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, we'll see you on the 15th.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, the next item is under public hearings, is item C, PB 22-07, Kerituck County Tax Amendment, Request to amend the County, Kerituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 8, Nonconformities, and, and Chapter 10, Definitions of Measurement, to make minor corrections and clarifications to ordinance language related to campgrounds. I believe we have our director, Kevin Kemp, for this one.
Thank you, Chairman. This text amendment is to the campground ordinance. As you are aware, you know, in February, you passed a new campground ordinance, a lot of consideration, a lot of public meetings. Now that the staff has worked with the ordinance for a few months, we found a few grammatical reference and clarifications that we bring forward in this amendment. There are three items included in the amendment. The first is an amendment to section 4.2.4J. There's three parts to this. The first is we are removing the word facilities after infrastructure. And what this is doing is it is making it consistent with how infrastructure is defined in Chapter 10 of our UDO. We just wanted to be consistent so it was clear. The second one is that we want to clarify that entry drives can encroach into the required setback. This is something that, you know, we made an interpretation that could happen, we now want to code it. So we add that, we clarify that, the driveways still have to meet the requirements of 5.6.7, which is all the dimensional and standards for driveways and entryways. The last one is that there is a code reference that needed to be corrected in terms of landscaping. The second item of this amendment is clarifying the status of nonconforming campgrounds. As the amendment was written, it would completely prohibit campgrounds. What this does is clarify that campgrounds existing before 2013 are nonconforming, and that in order to become conforming, a campground would have to meet the requirements of the current ordinance. The last item is very simple. It is just a grammatical change, removing the word "to" from the alternate camping unit definition. That word got in there mistakenly, so we're removing it. And that is the extent of the text amendment. I will leave up here the review standards for text amendments and open myself up for any questions.
Just to be clear again, that if someone were to apply for special use to get into control, they'd have to meet all the, the requirements of the new language?
Yes, sir. No, none of the requirements with the new ordinance are changed with this.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, we asked the board for some action on this in form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you'll want to open the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, you're, I had right in front of me. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing portion for PB 22-07. I have no one signed up for the public hearing on this. If there's anyone who did get a chance to sign up, come forward, say your name and address. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this, and now I'll ask the board for some action.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 22-7 because the request is consistent with the land use development goal number 10 and policy ED1 of the 2006 land use plan. Request is reasonable and in the public interest by correcting and clarifying language recently implemented in the UDO.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item under new business, item A, consideration of an amendment to the Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedures to provide for a reading of a code ethic statement at each meeting. And I'd like to start off, just make a couple comments on this. We've had some board members that had asked if we could read an ethic statement, which, I mean, I think it's perfectly fine if we read something. It's, whether we read something or not, it still doesn't, I mean, it's still, the commissioners still held accountable for their actions when they were sworn in to abide by the law. And then we've had some board members that wanted to, or we had county attorney slash manager provide some language that we looked at, and so commissioners wanted to look at it and put their thoughts into it, so we had some final, a final draft coming for the board, or sent out to the board to review. I did ask the county attorney his thoughts on it, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but she thought it covered adequately the, the code of ethics.
Well, I mean, it certainly brings forward, and I think was the goal, the, the concept of ethical conduct by commissioners in matters coming before them, and, and so it gives you a moment to reflect on that and to assure the public that going forward with matters on the agenda, you, you either do have a conflict which you will then recuse yourself from, if it's, if there is cause for that, or you do not have a conflict.
So at today's, I guess, right now, I guess, we, we saw the final, or a final draft that was presented to the board, and if the board's got any further comments or concerns to address, I would ask the board members to discuss that now, or ask the board for some action on this item.
I make the motion to approve as written, the pursuant to GS 153-A-44, Commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the Commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or any, or on matters on which the Commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234, 153A-340 parentheses G, or 160A-388 parentheses E parentheses two. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinance, it is the duty of every Commissioner to avoid both conflict of interest and appearance of conflict. Does any Commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict. I move to have this read before our meeting.
Just to be clear, I, I take it that you're moving to adopt the ordinance in its entirety, as there are some, a couple other minor things that are also modified.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for, not reading for each meeting, any further discussions on this?
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, sure can.
Is this something that we will read at the beginning before? Just a clarification.
Yes, this amends your rules of procedure, which includes your order of business, and so it amends that section as well, to add for an ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder, which would be the third item on your agenda going forward, following the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and it will be read by the chairman or chairman's designee before the remainder of the meeting continues.
Okay, thank you, that's...
Any other further discussions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will now read this and get this incorporated for our next meeting. Thank you. Okay, the next item under new business is our, the appointment of Megan E. Morgan as county attorney and consideration of county attorney employment agreement. I believe we have extended an offer with a contract to Ms. Morgan.
That's correct. Ms. Morgan has responded that she accepts the county's offer. She also agrees with the employment agreement as it appears before you, and it is now for you to make your appointment of your county attorney and employment agreement, and of course, Ms. Morgan is here this evening as well.
And her...
First day will be August 1st.
Okay, all right, well, any further discussion on this from the board? If not, ask the board for a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second. Nope, Ms. Kate can have it.
Ms. Kate, second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We will see you August 1st.
I'd like for her to come up so the public could see her.
Please, come on, come on forward real quick.
Okay, well, I just wanted to thank y'all again for this amazing opportunity. It really is a dream come true for me, so I am very much looking forward to starting August 1st. It is an honor to serve at the pleasure of this board alongside the county manager, and I all, all for the, the best interests of Currituck County, this wonderful place that we live, we call home, and I've always called home, and always will. I can't ever see myself leaving this wonderful place. I will always be honest, I'll work hard, I will take my ethical responsibility to Currituck County very seriously at all times. So again, I just thank you all, and I'm really excited.
Thank you. All right, get your county attorney report ready for the first.
I will, sorry.
All right, the next item is board appointments, and under gaming commission, I do have my appointment has expired, and I believe it was sent out to the board. I'd like to appoint Louis Davis to the gaming board, and that's going to be my nomination for that item.
Second.
We have a second for that? Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. The next item we have is for, I believe we have a senior advisory, assistant advisory board selection.
Yes.
Yes.
That was mine. That's mine, I was trying to think of her last name. I knew her first name was Donna, but, I apologize. But she is my appointment, and I spoke to Stacy, Stacy Joseph from the senior center, and she advised me how much she volunteers already and is active at the senior center, and I think she fits the bill for it, and I did forget her last name, I apologize, but Donna McCormick is my replacement for Ms. Fairchild, who turned out.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next item is the casin agenda.
Move for approval. Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I guess at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn from our regular meeting, or not adjourn, I'll make...
We got a closed session.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. At this time, I'll go ahead and move that, move into closed session in pursuit of GS 143-318 dot 11, to discuss matters related to the location expansion of industrial business in county pursuant to GS 143-11. Okay, we'll take a few minutes for this to...
You'll also want to read the, the next part of the closed session with regard to the real property.
Real property.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry, and to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating the price or other material terms of the contract for purchase of real property for property located at 2878 Kerituck Highway owned by Daniel W. Humphrey, and unaddressed property located at West Side Lane owned by Amy D. Wells and Ronald K. Bennett to be used for any governmental purpose.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I was hoping I had to read the whole...